Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I gotta wait till the clock strikes seven here and we'll announce the meeting.
You were doing the most on your IG.
Exactly. The clock strikes seven. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, and our friends on Zoom. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council's study session agenda for this Monday, June 12th, 2023. So we have several items for discussion tonight, and we're pleased to welcome our new police chief, Patrick Smith, to review the first quarter 2023 police report and statistics. Chief Smith.
Hey, good evening. As you recognize, the new reporting information is done a little bit different, and I'll just go over it quite real quickly and then go through the process. In the first quadrant, you'll notice that there are three quadrants now. The first quadrant will show a comparison between the fourth quarter and the first quarter crime information. Then it will show a comparison between the first quarter of last year as compared to the first quarter of this year, and then the final will show the year-to-date numbers of where we are. For our calls for service, it shows that we are currently we currently have as far as from fourth quarter to first quarter, a 3.6% increase in calls for service. The second part being the comparison between first quarter of last year and first quarter this year, it shows a 7.5% increase in calls for service and basically a 7.5% increase year-to-date. The number of arrests that officers made during this timeframe, first fourth quarter versus first quarter last year to this year is an increase of 6.4% versus 22 to 23 22 to 23 first quarters would be 26%, and our overall 26.1% increase year-to-date. Our gross misdemeanors were up, arrests were up 66.7%, and as compared with last year at the same time, it was up 400% or from two to 10. Misdemeanors were up year-to-date, 11%, and then we had a reduction in the warrant arrests by 12% year-to-date. So our total compound was an increase of 10.5% overall for our total.
And I'm gonna ask you a quick question.
Yes, sir.
So we know felonies are arrests can occur by our department, as can misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors. The question I have, it isn't reflected here, and I'm not asking you to pontificate, but it would be interesting to know, is maybe a fourth column, how many of those felonies and gross misdemeanors or misdemeanors actually resulted in a conviction of some sort?
Okay.
Because anecdotally, we see fines and forfeitures in our municipal court kind of trending down, shall we say, and we don't know necessarily about the felony arrests and what results of them arising out of our good work here in Lakewood on the police department side. So I don't know if that's something that can be traced or if it's a data piece that would be helpful to the rest of us, but it seems to me the good work that you do on arrests, which help hopefully to reduce the crime rate, may or may not translate into keeping knuckleheads who are repeat offenders off the street, and it would be nice to know that.
Yes, what we can do is follow up with the courts to get the adjudication of the cases that come through at that time, but that's that information we don't have right now.
Yeah, certainly.
The next area we cover is crimes against person persons. If our comparison from fourth quarter to first quarter is a reduction in aggravated assaults by 38.4%, simple assaults were reduced by 12.5%, homicides were null, they were equivalent. There was a reduction in robbery by 35.9%, and our sex crimes will show an increase of 105% from 19 to 39. We noticed that that was primarily attached to many domestic domestic-related incidences. In comparison from our first quarter to first quarter, 22 to 23, there was a reduction in aggravated assaults by 8.2%. We showed an increase in simple assaults by 9.3%. Our homicides are still equivalent. Robberies were down 12.7%, and our overall sex crimes were up 77.3%. Our year-to-date numbers were right on task with the prior numbers and that I just mentioned, and our overall numbers was an increase of 7.1%. Crimes against property. From fourth quarter to first quarter, our burglaries were up 13.5%. Fraud was down 8.5%. Make sure I'm showing where we are. Larceny was down 15.1%. Our motor vehicle theft has been, which has been a problem area, has increased by 16.2%. Stolen property down 8.7%. Vandalism was down 0.7% for a reduction of 1.3% overall. Our year-to-date numbers prove to be much better picture with our burglaries being down 37.4%. Our fraud, an increase of 10%. Larceny was down 23%. Motor vehicle theft, which, as I mentioned, was a problem area, 12.4%. Our stolen vehicle property was down 38.2%, vandalism was down 19%, and weapons law violation was up 13.3%. For a total all overall reduction in property crime by 15.1%. We shortened the pursuit and eludes area just to cover primarily from 2021 to the current date. As you can see in the graph from our comparison to now, our pursuits and eludes or basically eludes were up 32.3%. Our pursuits were down 11.1% when going comparing last quarter to this quarter. Overall, our year-to-date, our eludes were down 30.5%, but our pursuits were up 33.3%. Shots shots fired for this timeframe overall from last year to this year, fourth quarter to first quarter was down 10.1%. Our year-to-date, we show a reduction of 4.9% overall. Our motor vehicle theft, which I mentioned has been an ongoing problem for us, and that is we show a 16.2% increase from fourth quarter last year to first quarter this year, and year-to-date, we show a 12.4% increase in our motor vehicle thefts. Overall, on the collision front, we show a decrease of 10% from last quarter to this quarter. From first quarter comparison, we show a reduction in traffic collisions by 6.5% and a year year-to-date of 6.5%. On the last part, we do an overall summary so that you can compare the summary of crime within the area, and that will let you know that various areas across the board of where we show some type of increase and reduction in crime. As I showed on there, one of the slides that I that was not included, and that talks about our stolen vehicle problem that I mentioned within the city, and it's one of the areas that we are targeting for major improvement. So I decided to look at the state on a state round overall first, and in the state, just in the month of May, month of May alone, there were 3,409 stolen vehicles. In the month of May, where the city of Lakewood, we had 56 stolen vehicles. And overall year-to-date, our citizens have had to endure 360 stolen vehicles for the city of Lakewood. And you know, this has a tremendous impact on the citizens who live here, those who park on our streets, use the various parks, et cetera. Our number one stolen vehicle in the city happens to be a Kia Soul, or Kias and Hondas have been topping the list as a number of them have been used by many of our youth. One of the one of the things that you'll see coming later on as a preventative measure to track some of the stolen vehicles in the area is we want to make it an investment in the block safety cameras, which will allow us to pick up stolen vehicles and know where they are, track them in critical areas of our city so that officers can at least take some action because until we can get this area under control in our city, this will translate to reductions in other areas. There's no one who goes into rob a bank and come out and sit at the bus stop. They have some type of vehicle or transportation to get them around, and we've got to make sure that as a city and as a department, that we're doing everything that we can to protect protect our citizens, particularly when many of them are working very hard on a daily basis and they truly need their ride to work. Now I'll answer any questions you might have, sir.
Yes, Councilmember Ramsey.
Thanks, Chief. Going back a little farther on the motor vehicle crime rates, on the motor vehicle thefts, we see this trend continuing, but it started earlier, like I call it. What, you know, say, pre-COVID, if you can, you don't recall, if you've read since you've been here, what was our rate? Now we're running about two a day, it appears.
Yes, if you can see in 2021, there were all about 129 year-to-date, whereas now, that's more than double where you were in 21, and so some of the changes in the laws to whereas we're not able to take action, we're not able to pursue offenders, we're not able able to go after them, and that had a tremendous impact on the stolen vehicles. And that's why chiefs of police across the the state have been jumping up and down about this one area.
With, yeah, and we were we had our legislative agenda in tune with the police chief's desires. With respect to minors, it seems that it's not not news anymore when a 13-year-old's committing a crime with a stolen vehicle. Not just this stolen vehicle itself, but some other crime. Have we seen youth out on the street committing another vehicle theft after they've been arrested on the catch-and-release basis?
Absolutely. We've seen it over and over. Work patrol just a few days ago, and pretty much every call that I went on had to do with a stolen vehicle or the recovery of a stolen vehicle, and many of them involved our.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the report. So I know that the city did the steering wheel lock giveaways. Did that have any impact on any of the vehicles? And also, is there plans to do that again? I just was wondering how the effectiveness of it was.
So we do still have some of the locks at our front desk, and they're free to citizens to come and pick up at any time if they're impacted by this or they just want to use it as a preventative measure. It really had no impact primarily because it's not effective if you don't use it. It's not effective if you have it on the backseat or in the trunk. It has to be used in order to be effective.
Mr. Francis Center.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the the presentation. The on the matter of burglaries.
Yes, sir.
And I noticed that burglaries was one of those elements of property crime that seems to have trends going both ways. Okay, you know, it's it looked like it you know, went up in the past quarter, but it's what the then comparing first quarters and year-to-date, which are really the same thing, it's down. So was this first quarter's increase an anomaly or in burglaries? That's a very broad category that includes commercial burglaries and residential burglaries and others. Is there a particular subcategory of burglary that looks like it's accounting for the the increase from one quarter to the next?
No, primarily, if if you look at burglaries, sometimes burglaries go with your weather. The warmer it gets, the more people are out, the more activity, and people tend to become involved. If you look at the year-to-date ending in the fourth quarter of 2022, you'll notice that burglaries were down to 96, and then later on in this quarter, the there was an increase of 13.5% based on that. However, overall year-to-date, we showed down 37%. That's a dramatic increase, I'm sorry, decrease from last year around this time to this year around this time. My hope is that from the decrease, and I hope my hope is that we're putting the right people in jail to prevent future crimes. As far as the the increase from fourth quarter to this quarter, I would say it's more activity, more the the weather being better than the end of last year and more opportunity. And so my hope is that we can retain the huge increase for year-to-date at 37% because you'll notice that the second column where it shows 174, there was an overall reduction from 2022 to 2023 of 37% as well. So we're we're hoping that we can retain the overall reduction from last year to this year.
We're we're not anticipating that the trend is changing from decreasing to increasing.
No, we don't anticipate the trend trend is changing. What we are hoping is that we can use the data from last year and prevent future crimes in the same areas and hopefully arresting the right people to prevent future crimes from occurring.
And then on this slide, the the weapons law violations. I think in it's never been called out as a crime against property in in previous reports to the council about what is going on, and I guess I'm trying to understand how these become crimes against property. What what sort of offenses are we really talking about there?
Or are weapons law violations?
Yeah. What really are those?
So that could be a number of things from I'm sorry.
What felon in possession means.
Yes, it could be a number of things from a felon in possession of a firearm, illegal possession of a firearm. It could be just a number of of things that are violations of the law related to a weapon.
So those are classified as a property crime, it seems. In the past, we they fall in a different category, I thought.
So so maybe what you're seeing is a difference. If you'll notice on here, the the area that was where things were moved was we were showing some of them as societal crimes. And so societal crimes nowadays have been almost eliminated by changes in the law. And so you are not seeing many of those have been reduced down to non-crimes or minimal crimes or or eliminated by changes in the law.
So when we talk about weapons laws violations and 34, and that differs significantly from the shots fired statistic.
Right.
That you showed too, so is that just because shots fired don't often result in actually identifying what what happened?
So the shots fired is something completely different. And this this deals with our calls for service in the city, and that deals with shots being fired where officers come out and they'll have evidence of several casings left on the streets, and these are reported calls for service related to shots being fired in the city.
But but they don't go into the weapons violation crime statistics because there's not really certainty about what.
Well, other than other than shots just being randomly fired, that's there it doesn't show as a crime because you don't really have a victim. You just have someone who may step out and start firing rounds or someone who fires several rounds, but when you get there, there's no one at the scene, and all you have are casings on on the street. We make sure that we tabulate our shots fired within the city limits so that we can keep track of what's happening, and later on, if a crime occurs, if we're able to track those casings through the NIBIN system to connect one crime to another, then that's where this comes into play.
And well, I appreciate it being included in your report this quarter. It's not something that we particularly seen or gotten an awareness of trends in, and so I think it's 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 one of those statistics that has an influence on the perception of safety of residents that goes on if they, you know, they they hear shots themselves, or they hear someone tell them about shots, or they hear someone tell them that they heard from someone else that there were shots going on in a different neighborhood, and that that is a real area of that impacts the perception of of the safety in Lakewood. Thank you.
Mr. Bokey, did you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions. Larceny's down, which would apparently be good news, but is it just that stores have stopped reporting? They're just throwing up their arms and like.
Well, we would hope that they would not stop reporting. And I would think that they would still need to report because they still need to report to their insurance company to recoup whatever losses or damages that may have occurred, and so we definitely want to keep track of them, but we also want to make sure that we're doing the necessary patrols in critical areas to make sure that we're having an impact. Over this timeframe, we've done a number of emphasis patrols in various areas of the city where we've made repeated arrests in different areas, and we hope that our efforts are having some impact on the number of larcenies that are.
Okay, good. So that was my follow-up. Sorry, you are continuing those emphasis.
Yes.
Whatever their emphasis, nights or days or whatever. Good, thank you. And then I will comment on weapons law violations. Years ago, I had someone in your position tell me that if you look at weapons law violations and drug arrests, then you know the police are being proactive. That was his his statement to me. So actually, higher weapons law violations are actually a positive sign because they're almost always felons in possession, and you're actually getting guns off the street.
We're doing our best to get the guns off the street, but the reason we want to make sure we track the shots being fired, any citizen who has shots fired outside of their residence as you mentioned about the the peace and harmony of your community and wonder about the safety of your community, and those are areas that we need to know that we're having an impact in because oftentimes, it's not just the crime that occurs, it's the fear of crime, and so we need to impact the the fear and perception of crime.
Are you seeing, and I think I know the answer to this, but let's get the official answer. I'm hoping I don't know the answer. The county jail for felonies, are there still booking restrictions, and if there are, what type of booking restrictions are we still talking?
So far, they've been willing to work with us, and we've been able to get those individuals who are arrested in, and we have not seen any COVID restrictions that that have remained.
Okay, good. And then on the mental health side, I sat through a presentation at the PCRC Pierce County Regional Council, and this the the director of the Well Found Hospital said, "We are open for for drop-ins," meaning for the police to drop people in. They were up to 85 beds. This has been an ongoing thing for a long time here. They opened years ago, and they're still below capacity, but she she stated that to this group of elected leaders in this meeting, and I don't know if the the mayor was on the call that night or not, but she clearly said, "We're taking drop-offs." Are you able to, when when there is someone who's seriously mentally ill that you have to pick up, are you able to find a place for them in a non-jail situation?
That I'll have to get back to you.
Okay.
Because normally, when we do or dealing with a mental health situation, normally, we just follow the standard protocols to make sure that the individual receives the care and treatment that they need, and normally, that involves a hold being placed on.
Thank you. Sir, Councilmember Laura Soll.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Just two questions. On your arrest slide, are what amount of those arrests are for crimes committed within Lakewood?
Committed in Lakewood?
Right. Are they all associated with crimes committed here, or are you arresting folks who were brought in or had crimes committed outside of?
No, that, okay, these are Lakewood incidences.
Okay, thank you. And then I apologize, I missed your answer to Councilmember Bell's question about whether the steering wheel locks are still available.
Yes.
The city. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Again, my sort of concluding question. Thanks, Chief, again, my sort of concluding question, I have one specific to my. Earlier question and one just kind of an open softball for you. And, and the earlier one. Involves, you know, arrests, I think you folks are obviously doing your work with arrests, but arrests are one thing, holding folks who have been arrested accountable. Is perhaps another. And it would be uh important. From a policy perspective to know whether or not. Their resources are being adequately directed. And making your lives and jobs perhaps easier. By ensuring that the good work you do for arrests on both the felony levels, Mr. Bokey alluded to at the county. As well as the misdemeanor arrests. Are we seeing traction in holding folks accountable and is there some sort of data we can add to the report? Either through our own municipal court system. Uh, or perhaps from feedback from Pierce County, that would be helpful, I think.
Yes, I think that would come through the courts uh in terms of, of uh the latter half in, in their, their stats and follow-up.
Maybe as a, as a body, we can work on that, I don't know if that's possible or if that's an onerous request, but it seems to me. We should be able to track the number of felony arrests going to the county. And misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor arrests go into our own municipal court. And to get some feedback from that, so we know that we're not. Defining uh, you know, frustration in a new, robust way. Did you have a comment there, Ms. Walker?
No, just that we do have a new prosecutor on our staff, you may or may not recognize uh. Karen Schumacher, who's had about thirty years of experience and we are talking about the connection between the arrests and, and all of that. Um, the county stats might be a little trickier, but we can certainly start with what gets um. Handled down to us from the county that started as a felony and then becomes a misdemeanor.
We know who we arrested. It'd be kind of nice to know the tale at the end, here's my softball for you, thanks for coming, it's great to see you. Uh, welcome aboard and notwithstanding the data. What are your impressions and your, your focus as the new chief as you? Have had a chance to touch and feel the department now and gotten a better chance to know the community, albeit short, what are your impressions and thoughts?
One, one thing that I'll say is first and foremost is Lakewood Police Department is a, is a good police department. The thing that I like most is that um they are, we are, have a learning environment to whereas officers are involved in training. Uh, on a regular basis, providing the necessary training in terms of uh law updates, which. Attorney Walter also helps us out with. Uh, making sure that we get the necessary training as the laws changes. And also uh having the feedback from the officers of what they're seeing, what works and what, what we're doing. The thing that I want to do most is to have an impact on the critical areas of crime. Uh, considering the laws have changed, we have to come up with new ways to uh reduce. Uh, victimization in areas of, of crime, as, as I mentioned, even with the stolen vehicles and things of that nature. I want to introduce more uh technology to the department being, that being with the um. Uh, flock safety camera. Which will uh pick up license plates of stolen vehicles, we can identify them as soon as we place them in the system and we know. Which areas of the city they, they're traveling and where they are so that we can reduce further victimization as they, they roam throughout the city. The other part is to add critical um. Uh, other cameras like Genetek that will uh help us to know exactly what's going on. Different parts of the city and critical areas of the city. Um, and I want to in, increase the training of our officers with those systems so. That they'll know where to be, they'll know when to respond, they'll know uh what's happening. And what's more critical about, about the whole scenario is. Is when an officer is responding, we will not just be looking for a blue Nissan Sentra, we'll, we'll know that we're looking for the blue Nissan Sentra. With the, with the uh orange door or traffic damage on the left side. Or the spare tire on the right side, so it gives us critical information. Ahead of time to know what we're looking for and, and that way we are only contacting the individual that we're looking for and not have. Some random citizen who happens to be in the same type vehicle being impacted by uh officers trying to resolve.
So would some of the camera uh activity perhaps be focused in some of the parks that have? More than their share of, shall we say, knucklehead activity and the reason I bring that up relating to shots fires, I got a call from a constituent. Lives right on Active Park. And they had a shooting incident, I don't know if it was last week, a week before last, but. Tends to be a consistent amount of evening activity by a certain. Population that's involved in sort of knucklehead, you know, gang-related activity and sometimes it erupts into. Stuff that's less than desirable, right, and then the neighbors are getting freaked out because they have bullets flying around their fences in their houses.
Correct.
So those kinds of things would be helpful.
So, so it all involves input, input from the community, input from the officers, but also input from our own data. Our own data will tell us uh, uh, the critical areas of the city that have been, been. Decimated or.
Impacted.
Impacted critically by, by the, the areas of crime that we're trying to reduce. And so our data will tell us, but also those repeat citizens who are talking to the police and telling us what's happening. Uh, they will, they can also provide impact and one of the greatest areas and things that we're doing, just like our citizens' police academy that we're putting on right now. We're hoping to use uh, uh. Uh, those same citizens as ambassadors for the police department uh to help us to have better communications, to be the eyes and ears of the department. And also to be that ambassador in the community that will tell this other citizen, hey, you need to report this, hey, let's follow up. I'll go down with you and, and work with you to uh bring better resolve with the police department. So those are the, those are the type connections that we need to have.
Excellent.
Within the community.
Well, I heard some possible need for resource allocation, so those are the kinds of things we like to hear, so I'm sure more to follow.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Next we have our Capor Projects Manager, Mr. Ted Hill, come on down, Mr. Hill, for our review of the six-year. Transportation Improvement Program and that memo starts on page thirteen of our packet.
We good to go, all right. Sorry about that, just didn't want to start if you weren't ready, um, so good evening. Uh, the six-year tip is obviously an annual update we have to do uh to stay in uh. The good graces with the state and make sure we have projects that are eligible for uh grant funds and uh. So uh the meat and potatoes of the actual tip, which I'm assuming is also in your packet are the last two pages, which is page twenty-two and twenty-three. Really, the tip is the same list year by year, we just add, delete and modify, so I'll get this started. All right, so remove this year. Silicon sidewalks, the non-safe routes, um phase three, that is actually the one that's wrapping up right now, we just installed signal arms this last week. And hopefully before July, we will have this new signals up and operational. South Comeaway overlay, which I'm assuming everybody's enjoyed between five twelve and hundred and eighth, that was done at night and uh looks wonderful. And then the Elwood angle, I'm still debating on leaving this in here permanently since we aren't done, but it's under construction now for the new roundabout at the Fort Silicon Park entrance. Uh, the trail along Elwood and the sidewalks on the south side of Angle Lane. So those are the three we're proposing to remove from our uh tip this year. Uh, visuals are worth a thousand words, so um this is the Silicon sidewalks, non-safe routes to school. So uh from Custer all the way to Weller on mostly the south side and a little on the north side along the eighty-eighth route. So you'll see the wonderful sidewalks, uh, you probably noticed the large wall, if you know that it was actually a wall from the street side. Uh, as you get closer to Weller. Um, wonderful projects and just about there for completion. South Comeaway overlay, uh, obviously done at night, that's why we have some night photos, uh, we've got some daytime photos with the striping all done. Another great project and obviously replaced our wear course, South Comeaway is a pretty heavy, heavy uh arterial, so. We're gonna do actually another stretch of South Comeaway the year after next, do another overlay up north. Keep that in good condition. And then uh Elwood Angle, I apologize, being in the middle of construction, I don't have the best photos, but uh. The roundabout that is under construction at the entrance, the mixed-use trail, uh, and once we are past. Summerfest, we will start the work on Angle Lane, we're trying to minimize how much work we do to Angle Lane till after Summerfest to make sure that road is still usable for the uh. Egress and eager ingress of the site, so. Oh, go ahead.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh. Is that all gonna be done by Summerfest?
The roundabout will be usable by Summerfest.
Okay. Will be paved then?
That is, yes, it'll, it should be paved. Uh, projects proposed to be added, um, it's a light, ooh, sorry.
Mr. Franzen has one, did you have the two?
Uh, on the uh, the Angle. Lane, Elwood Roundabout Project, when we were briefed about it. Previously. It also included a reconfiguration of Dresden. To where Dresden was not going to be a complete loop as it is now, what was going to. Have access off the roundabout, but with dead end and, and, and only come back out to the roundabout. Or it, it, I think that wasn't on your slide. But is Dresden actually going to change from the loop it is now to uh essentially a dead end?
Yes.
Thing there, okay.
And of course, the, the dog leg is why we're putting in the roundabout, so you don't come up Elwood to eighty-seventh and. Try to figure out who gets to go first.
Okay, and could you describe the um, the design? Uh, the poles, heights, things of that, of the pedestrian lighting that's gonna go in along the trail? Uh, I mean, I, 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 how aesthetic is it going to be or how?
So the lights are gonna be there to light up the trail, I'm not sure how, they're gonna be as aesthetic as the lights you see along the roadways, the main roadways, so they're not gonna be, you know, the textured concrete.
Metal poles or concrete poles or?
They should be metal and have, yes, Cobra headlights, um, yeah, it's, it's. But pedestrian scale, so it's a little shorter, it's not gonna be the thirty-five foot in height, I think.
Yeah, yeah, and they're not streetlights, they're, 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 they're going on just to. It's. Everybody be okay with the big project, it's the little details that people, people, people wonder about to, to be able to go and do that and it, but. It wasn't something we discussed when we had the. The plans all laid out on the tables in here.
Correct.
The other guy, you just said they're gonna be lights, but not what they look like. And some others, that became a topic of discussion.
Would be nice to know that sort of detail, you know, upfront, when we do the little charrettes and we look at the project on the tables because. There is an interest in some design, not that we're engineers who know all things design, but you know. There are some aesthetic qualities that we like to see in the city.
Engineers aren't known for being that, yeah.
I was being facetious, yeah.
Okay, and then, and then lastly, the roundabout and traffic will be, be rerouted. Before July fifteenth. Because of Summerfest.
This, this.
Is that, are we still on track for that to happen?
Yes, roundabout should be open and usable by Summerfest.
Okay, but the entire project, the, the timeline to complete it is?
We're, now that we've asked them to not start construction on Angle Lane, it's gonna be a little longer than what we originally planned, but it was not all ever gonna be done by.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, it was just to get the park.
Yeah, we're, we're probably still a good month and a half to two months away from completion of all of it down to Hipkins on Angle Lane.
Wow, okay, yeah. Okay, well, you know, you know, I certainly think that that's a. That's a project that, well, I'm glad to see it's gonna be done and so it's gonna come off the tip, I, I think it's a. It's gonna create a head scratching. Intersection.
Right.
And eliminate it.
I, I just want to follow up on this comment a little bit, you know, as you know, we're getting beat up enough as it is about trees being removed for this pathway. So having the pathway enhanced to a point where it actually looks aesthetically pleasing is a value to us, so. Just planting that for the future.
And we would like to get it at least gravelled and ready to pave.
Absolutely.
The dust control there.
Absolutely, I get it, I get it, yeah. Okay, go ahead.
All right. Uh, projects proposed to be added, uh, light list this year, but we have a lot more happening in construction than we have adding to the list, so. Western State Hospital Signal, good gracious. Uh, is the ad and actually is all funded by DSHS, so we're proposing a temporary signal. At uh, I always forget the name of those roads out there, um. Looking, looking Dave.
We, we know where it is.
Ah, you know.
We got you on this one.
So there's, not currently, is it Church Road? Chapel.
Yeah.
Chapel currently has a signal, but we're actually gonna be moving that over to the other entrance. And I'll have some photos here in a second to show you that, um, but the temporary and the permanent signal is hundred percent. Uh, paid for by DSHS, they decided to go with us instead of a consultant and uh bidding the project because they could see that we could get it done faster. And cheaper, which keeps my people busy and that's a good thing. Um, so the map, obviously the blue are the removed projects from the tip and the little orange dot to the left. Uh, next to Fort Silicon Park is the addition of the signal at Western State Hospital. And there we go, so the entrance that we're going to put the temporary signals up at, uh, and that'll also be where the permanent single will move to. Uh, from Chapel and we're all set and done, that's, I think they said three to four years out for the permanent, so this temporary one is basically to support construction activities. On their site, um, some fifty odd, fifty million dollars are spent into remodel. The hospital, so that's our one add. And uh, I guess I'll open it back up for more questions if you have any.
Mr. Franzen.
Hey, and, and thank you, uh, in the. Packet that we have, you know, and it's on our page thirty-four. That, that page twenty-two of your plan. Uh, there, there, there's a chart that says completed, removed and added projects. And um. I, and I note that one of the completed projects is the non-motorized transportation plan update and the council got a chance to look at that and. It, it, it has seen that. But the very first item says ADA Transition Plan Update Updates. And when we were briefed on the non-motorized transportation plan update, we were told that that was not completed. That, that they, that, that usually the two were done in tandem in past years. Or in past decades. But, um, but, but this was going to be done separately, but there's never been anything brought back to the council regarding. The ADA Transition Plan. Update, I, it's not something that we've ever seen, other than we were told. It's coming in the future when we saw the non-motorized transportation plan update. And so on this page, it says completed, does that mean? It is completed or it will be completed in twenty twenty-three?
Since that in of itself is not a capital project, it will be completed, is my understanding, they met with a consultant a week or so ago. Uh, that's being done by our engineering services manager, Weston Ott. Um, but we also felt that it being a plan didn't actually fit as a capital project, so that's why we're actually kind of cleaning up this year with some of these things coming off the list.
So, 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 so completed is. In this case, what it really means is it no longer needs to be included because it's not a capital project.
Correct, and maybe complete is not the terminology that.
All right, so, so my, my thought was though. It's an update that still needs to be done.
I disagree.
So, so completed is a confusing. The description to me, I, I can understand it being removed from the tip or not being capitalized, but. It's something that I'm still expecting. To be done before this was integrated in with the non-motorized transportation plan and included things like. At, at different intersections, putting in the walking ramps and things to be able to go and do that. Um, so I just wanted to be clear that. There's still going to be a plan to fully integrate ADA plans there. fully integrate ADA plans there. Um, and that, uh, on the same page, the third one down, it's Project three oh two oh eight two Citywide Traffic Signal Management System. Uh, so this one is being removed um because we've shifted to a contract with the county to do that. Um, but there's still work that's gonna be done and it's still gonna cost the city money. Is that not right?
I mean, we do have a contract with the county, so yes, there will be costs in terms, it's not gonna be a CIP unless it's a CIP updating a.
So is that like the other one where it just isn't a a capital project that that would place it in the tip, but it's still going to be something that's in the budget that the city manager brings to us.
Correct.
Okay, and in that same line, there is a um under the five-year column, there's a three fifty. And I'm trying to decide, it's the only one that, it's only the project on this this group of pages that had on that page that had the number there, what's the three fifty mean?
That was the number that came along with it, removing off the list, so I will, in error, I probably should have removed it, so I will get it removed.
Okay, to be able to go go and do that. All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lots of good projects. Okay, so next we're going to have Ms. Spear lead us through a review of the twenty twenty-three comp plan amendments. That'll be followed by the twenty twenty-four Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations Periodic Review Process. So, you're stuck with us for a while, it looks like.
All right, I would say vice versa, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, so, uh, yeah, whether it's a good or a bad thing, you're gonna be hearing two different comprehensive plan cycle discussions this evening, the first is the one that will be in front of you for a hearing on July, excuse me, June twentieth, and then action July third. And then the other is a status update for you, as was requested by council periodically throughout this year to get ready for the big twenty twenty-four periodic review. So we're starting with the twenty twenty-three information. Last fall, Resolution twenty twenty-two fifteen, uh, adopted by the council, set a docket of nine potential amendments. And then that went through internal review and then planning commission review. And on May thirty-first, the commission completed its recommendation of Resolution twenty twenty-three oh one to you regarding those nine amendments. The first was to take the next step in implementing what the council already adopted with the tree code last year and the the discussions that have gone on since. Uh, but adding a tree canopy goal of citywide forty percent cover by twenty fifty. And so this is adding a land use plan, uh, excuse me, a land use policy to do so. The second is a requested rezone that began with just the MF three, and I'm not sure if I can it's not gonna show, but the lighter orange, I guess, the horizontal MF three, three properties there to the right-hand side of this map. That was a private application made, but after conversation at the planning commission and then the council and then back to the planning commission, the additional, uh, MF one properties immediately to the south of that were added to this amendment. And what this does is bring those six or seven, um, different parcels into the turquoise outline, which is the downtown sub area. And so the idea here is that all of those properties would be rezoned to, uh, central business district zone, which is what is exclusively within the downtown. And that, once that happens, assuming it does, we will then be bringing an update to the boundary of the downtown sub area in order to bring, uh, all of this into consistency with the plan itself. The third application, uh, came from the Lakewood Racket Club. Back in twenty fifteen, there was a request made and a change made by council to, uh, the parcels with purple stars on them were looked at, and as it stands right now, we actually ended up with a split zoning on a couple of parcels where you have either mixed residential one or open space residential. What was requested last fall as part of this cycle originally was that, um, the racket club wanted to go with OSR two. But then this spring, when the planning commission began to talk about this, they submitted an updated application saying, rather than that, could we please go to Neighborhood Commercial two, because that would allow their use outright rather than as a conditional use? There was a lot of conversation, um, following that request at the planning commission through public hearing, through, um, interim meeting conversations between staff and representatives of the racket club. But it all came down to taking a look at what is allowed as a use within open space recreation two and allowing what are called health and fitness facilities within them as a permitted use rather than conditional with specific building height and impervious surface requirements, and what this did was compromise between the public's concern about if this three parcels were to be rezoned as NC two, and then for whatever reason the racket club were to close, you would have Neighborhood Commercial two allowed uses in the middle of a residential area that didn't necessarily make sense. And so the idea here is to answer the concern about supporting this use, which, um, was discussed by multiple people as something that only provides services to their own members, but also to the public, the school districts, for instance, have partnerships with them. Uh, and not having them having to go through a conditional use review, but at the same time, keeping it as an open space recreational use in order to prevent, um, a future expansion into some other neighborhood commercial allowed use. So the way the planning commission came down on that one was to recommend that, um, the health facilities be allowed within OSR two, but that there'd be those specific uh, changes to building height and impervious surface to allow that to move forward. Number four?
Franzenner.
Yeah, you can, uh, Ms. Spear, um, with regards to the building heights, is that because there were no building types at all in the OSR two allowed uses? Or did we, or is this changing them to make them higher?
It's a little bit of both, unfortunately, because what we found is, I think what happened back in nineteen or twenty, when eighteen A was completely rewritten, there's one section that has no building height at all in OSR two, and there's another section that has a building height. And so we're reconciling those two things. Um, and then we're also talking about the building height for this use specifically is for, um, compliance with tournament rules based on the international, I think that's called tennis foundation or federation, so it it's a competition dimension for the court up to the inside roof of a building.
Okay, and then with with the note that the the commission's recommendation that we approve and make the changes to the OSR two criteria and, uh, and then and then change this, these parcels to OSR two. What's the backstory behind the recommendation to ask the racket club about public access?
Um, you had a couple of the planning commissioners who were not at every single meeting, and so they weren't aware of all of the conversation and weren't able to ask the question themselves of the racket club representatives about how either, um, whether it's senior programs or school districts are able to access the facility. That was mentioned by racket club representatives as part of their testimony, uh, that this is more than just a private club, this is used by other members of the community. And so they just wanted to ask that the council seek that response back from the racket club to verify, A, is that an accurate statement? And B, if so, what's the process by which these non-members are able to come in and use the courts?
So what does asking that question and getting a timely response? Does that have any impact at all on taking action?
Uh, I think it's.
By July third.
Yeah, the majority of the planning commission did vote to recommend what you see in front of you. The finding of fact is there at the request of one person in particular, but others agreed to it. Uh, and I guess I would just say that it's up to the council to decide how much weight to give the response if it's not what people are expecting and decide if you wanted to take a different avenue.
So what sort of a response would in your view, since I don't have a planning commission person here, what sort of a response would trigger rethinking? What's recommended?
That they don't allow non-members in at all. I think there there was a request for a verification that that is a true statement, and then if so, is it at cost, no cost, what's the process? If you were to hear, actually hear back from the racket club that, no, we only allow our members to use this, I think you'd have the planning commission concerned and wanting to maybe change its position.
So the recommendation was the councils should ask the racket club. So you're briefing us today, there's a public hearing in a week and a vote scheduled.
On July third, yeah.
Uh, third. So exactly what is the process for us to ask that question, has staff sent that question to the racket club or? I I I, how are we gonna come, how are we gonna deal with that recommendation? Uh, and get an answer and then digest it so we can do something on July third?
They should can testify.
Yes, and they've been recommended to do that, we've been in contact with them throughout the planning commission dialogue back and forth, and they're aware of the question, so they're ready to testify on the twentieth.
Are they preparing a re- answer to the question?
Yes.
This thing?
Yes.
So you think we will have that on July third?
I think you will have the answer on June twentieth, and then you'll be able to deliberate, to deliberate, take action on the third if you're ready to, or take the time that you need.
Okay. And your recommenda- staff recommendation, if we don't get an antime an answer, is is this significant enough to to delay this until for another year?
I think it would be more a question of whether the council was comfortable delaying action on the docket as a whole, maybe by one or two meetings in order to get an answer.
I I I guess, you know, for me, Mayor, I'm not quite sure that I understand the question as it relates to this, to this the 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 comprehensive plan. Um, whether it's a private of like some other places in the city that that deal with or provide recreational fac- facilities and and for members. You know, I I don't know that, uh, I'm trying to find the relevance of the the recommendation that we ask for the question and consider the answer. Well, I I I got, I I and I and I guess if we get an answer, we can discuss it, if we don't get an answer, we discuss the no answer, uh. And I I I'm having a hard time imagining, if if they say that it's a, we're a members-only institution, fine, now I know that, but it's what I always thought, anyway, uh, and I don't know how how that changes anything, since I don't, not inside the head of the planning commissioner.
Right, well, remember, these are all individual, it's not a thumbs up, a thumbs down on the packet, they're individually recommended and individually adopted or not by the council, so if we don't get the answers we want on twenty twenty-three oh three, and we don't have to accept the recommendation, whatever it is, if it's, I hear it's kinda conditional based upon what they heard from the racket club, which is to allow some sort of public entrance or use of facility once built.
Correct, and if I could, that is based on comp comp plan policy that talks about encouraging the community to be more physically active and encourage the community to be to be involved in providing park and active open space and recreational facilities, that was the basis for the recommendation to go along with the OSR two. So if this is not gonna be a quote, community-used facility, that's where the planning commission had a question.
Okay, but the racket club also is not asking for any city money to build a facility, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the Y is a private facility in a sense too, and they have membership for a fee, sometimes it's a free fee, but it's, you know, nonetheless a fee, Mr. Anderson.
Kinda get the feeling we're chasing our tail on this. Uh, we had a racket club for years as a bunch of open space, we agreed that they could build houses there.
Townhomes.
It turned out to be in a floodplain, they can't build houses there. They wanna build something else, is it an asset or not? Uh, it, we have all sorts of technical processes to get there, but the question is, is, would it be an asset to the community, and I personally think that the racket club has been an asset to the community, it provides, yes, it's for a fee, but it's it's a health facility, it teaches youth how to do something, keeps people out of trouble. It makes them healthier, and if they wanna enhance that, I think it'd be good for the community and doesn't cost us anything. So as government, the question is, should we stand in their way of doing something good? Or should we try to facilitate? And the bigger concern I would have is if you try to facilitate it, what unintended consequences would there be if you lifted too many restrictions on it, or said you could pave the whole thing, no, all impervious service or whatever. It's what's reasonable.
And I think that is part of the nature, but the work you've done is to allow more impervious surface with that particular designation in that zone, correct?
Correct, this was a a compromise where we took a look at impervious surface, building height and um, amount of the lot that could be covered by structure to figure out what works specifically for that use, but not beyond that.
That's why we went to the healthcare facility, or healthcare, or health recreation.
Yeah.
Recreation, yeah. Mr. Bokey.
Yeah, if I remember, Ms. Spear, the the confrontation, I think it was online one night. And I'm I'm also trying to think how we could have avoided this whole thing, because and and you detailed it, but it sounds like all of a sudden they realize, oh, oh, we can't build, and they need forty feet is what I think the
Correct.
the standard is, so they need a forty-foot building. Our open space and recreation, I didn't even know it was as convoluted as it was, I thought allowed twenty-five or something is what they believed. So they needed to come, you know, they were dead in the water, really, uh, and so, uh, you must have gone to work on this, so my, my my question is, is it's, it seems to adequately meet the needs of the club, because it now allows them to go to forty feet. But what are the, for us, what are the unintended con- anytime you dink around with these things and you start making exceptions for people? And and they're, they're very nice people, and and the racket club is actually, tennis has kind of come back, apparently, is a sport. So, um, but for us going forward now, we have this, hey, you can build a forty-foot-high building on open space or on open space recreation or whatever. Help me, help me alleviate my fears that this is we're doing somebody a favor, but this is gonna end badly for us on some of that project.
Well, first of all, what's being proposed in the code is not that everything in OSR two can go to that height, it is specifically that use. So anything other than cur- a a commercial or quasi-public health facility, health fitness facility, is still gonna be under the twenty-five foot limit. It is specifically the the, um, racket club essentially, because there isn't any other type of that in all of the OSR two in the city.
Okay, okay, great, and so you feel like you've met with the members of the club, this meets their needs, you feel this, but this adequately protects us, it keeps us out of, it keeps them out of having to get conditional use.
What this does is come right up against how far you've been for a particular applicant, we did quite a bit of work on this one and tried our best to answer, and and it was a legitimate concern expressed by members in, uh, uh, public testimony, and it was a legitimate concern from them wanting to be able to move ahead with this well-beloved facility within the city, so we're feeling like this is the best we can get.
And the impervious surface requirements will work for them also, okay?
And again, that is specific to that type of use, nothing else.
That, okay, so, because that's the other thing I worried about, like, oh, okay, and then we're calling it open space, but okay, I'm glad, well, good work then. It all works out, but we'll know ten years from now, whatever, it was good work.
Yeah.
Good work. Yeah. Mr. Brewer is gonna advocate for grass courts to take care of the impervious surface, yeah.
This amendment was custom-built for this request, it was also taken into account whether or not this amendment would affect other OSR two properties in Lakewood, we believe it will not. Maximum height for single-family residences, thirty-five feet residential zones for single-family, this is going up to forty, I don't see that as being a critical issue. They're all still still subject to Title fourteen, SEPA, all of that stuff that goes with the projects, so. They still have to go through the development review process, just like anybody else. Again, I would just sum it up by being it's very custom for this proposal.
Got it, thank you. Next one?
All right, thank you, so continuing through the nine, uh, number four is a request of, uh, LASSA for the third and fourth phase parcels of its gravelly lake commons project to be rezoned to neighborhood commercial two, and this is something that was recommended by the planning commission. Number five is the one that probably had the most review, the most discussion, uh, and it is in part in response to House Bill twelve-twenty that was adopted by the state legislature. Now, I can't remember if it was in twenty-one or twenty-two, but this is one that takes a look at what we're going to call special needs housing, which is encompassing emergency shelter, emergency housing, permanent supportive housing, and transitional housing, and allowing them in areas of the city where it's required by state law, with a one caveat that I'll go into. And then also recognizing foster care facilities where they are allowed, and then the last piece was a technical amendment requested by our city attorney's office regarding concomitant agreements and removing those from code. So as I just mentioned, there's state law behind much of what this amendment includes, uh, and it does reflect significant changes as a result of back and forth with affordable housing advocates, uh, the Department of Commerce, our own legal department, uh, and then community economic development staff. Just a reminder, under the, uh, also under twelve-twenty, there's now a requirement to plan for a certain number of housing units as well as number of units, uh, at various area median income levels, and for Lakewood, that's five hundred and seventy-four emergency housing units and then six hundred and thirty-seven permanent supportive housing units, both of those are a number targeted for the year twenty forty-four. Uh, and then down on the bottom, you'll see some statistics over the last few years, there were five hundred and ninety-six Lakewood clients in emergency shelters last year. Hundred and sixteen were counted in the twenty-twenty-three point in time count. And then as of, um, April fifteenth, which is now a few months back, but ninety-three clients had been, uh, referred year-to-date. And then, uh, just a note that we have been having our police department and other referrals from Lakewood going to Aspen Court, as you recall, from ARPA funding, but that is going to stop in August of this year, because that's when they will begin their transition of the facility to permanent supportive housing. So, looking at again the bill and what's required. On, um, the left, you'll see the full zoning map of the city and then blown up on the right-hand side is just the commercial areas in red and various shades of orange, where the hotels and motels are allowed. And under twelve-twenty, you have to allow emergency housing, shelter, permanent supportive and transitional housing in all of those areas of the city. Then permanent supportive and transitional housing must also be allowed in the residentially-zoned areas. So in addition to the commercial zones we were just looking at, you'll see this map, which looks a little different, because it's, uh, slightly different categories, but all of these areas are places where residential building is allowed, and so, so would PSH and TH. The reason, and I just mentioned that it was, there was going to be a caveat, what you're about to see is an overlay that would allow emergency housing and emergency shelter, not only in the commercial, uh, zones where hotels and motels are allowed, but also within one mile of transit. And the thought process behind that, um, at the planning commission level was because of the number of units that the city needs to plan for, rather than trying to keep those limited to just the the narrow linear areas of the commercial zones in Lakewood, spread that out a little bit further to the one-mile transit access and have it be in additional zones as well. Having said that, no, uh, emergency shelter or emergency housing is proposed for the air corridor zone one or two, or of course the North Clear Zone, as well as industrial business park, industrial one or two. So this is a map that shows you where that overlay would be, it's that lighter teal color. It's predominantly on the east side of the city, the purple on the far right or the far east, that's the air corridors one and two. The light and dark gray on the east side is the industrial area, the dark blue is public institutional, and the various shades of green are park and open space areas, but otherwise that teal area, which does also include Tillicum, because it's location near, uh, the DuPont Transit Station. Those would all be areas where emergency housing and emergency shelters would be allowed. And again, the permanent supportive and transitional housing would be also in the residential areas, uh, elsewhere in the city. Just a note that, um, I think the council is already aware of this, but just to note that the east side of the city is also where you have the high social vulnerability and medium social vulnerability uh, populations, as well as in Woodbrook and Tillicum, and this is also the areas identified through PSRC at least as areas of higher displacement risk. So what does this look like in the code? Um, high level in the yellow bands across the, the chart there, you'll see where permanent supportive and transitional housing become per- permitted uses, except for in public institutional, there are conditional use there, just because historically they have been. And then the emergency housing and emergency shelters, those are allowed, um, within that overlay. But you will also see in the code that there are a number of conditions based on state law related to both of those housing types that are allowed. I can't get the, the language exactly right, but it was there a reasonable spacing and intensity and, um, design standards for a site that you can do for emergency housing and emergency shelter under state law?
That's easy, what's that acronym?
Sorry, that's, that's emergency housing, emergency shelter overlay. We could come up with something better, but that's just purely the, the first letters of everything. Um, so the recommendations from planning commission is to go ahead and do this overlay. And then just a note as well, we did catch one, uh, scribbler's error in the draft code that's coming to you for a planning, or excuse me, to a public hearing next week, there was one more reference of the Seattle Bellevue metro area for area median income that needed to change. So I'm going to stop here, assuming there's questions on this amendment.
Mr. Anderson and then Mr. Bransitter on that.
So on the emergency shelter and permanent supportive housing? You flew through it quite quickly, and I appreciate that actually. But I seem to catch something about the planning commission expanding the breadth of the area. Now? From what I think I heard, we wouldn't have to expand the breadth of the area, but we have to provide for a capacity of X number of units by sometime in the future, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So, as one council member who won't be here to see this happen? I've watched millions and millions of dollars of contracts go by. My day job? And in the news on? Housing first, because the federal government says that should work, and if you do some scratching, build a real good argument that it's a dismal failure. Uh, and it's the cause of San Francisco and Seattle, Portland and LA's problems. And so as a council member, I would not want to vote for anything that facilitated that. And if I could restrict the area that it is allowed in geographically and allow it to go up? To supply the capacity for units? Two elements of the cost, the availability of land and the cost of construction over six stories high would perhaps make it less attractive to put it in Lakewood. So it could comply with state law? But not encourage what? In my political view, is a fail policy? Can we do that?
Um, what could be done is to go back to the map that you see here, where you only allow, um, the emergency housing and shelter in those areas that are colored red or orange here, which are the, uh, zoning, uh, areas allowing hotels and motels. And the reason that the planning commission did not do that is they did not want to concentrate all of them in those areas of the city, that was the thought.
Yeah, uh, but as a practical matter, what we see is uh, people don't move into emergency shelters and there is the possibility of enough money to support the permanent supportive housing that is capacity is being required, because if you, if you multiply out the five to six, five to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that it costs to build a permanent supportive housing unit, if the government does it, and then the thousands of dollars a month of costs to to subsidize the people living there? And the fact that you there's just, the money's never going to be there, there was a COVID bump, even that couldn't do it. Uh, so.
Plus the challenge is how do you avoid the issue that we have with adult family homes proliferating, proliferating in the residential zones, right? So if you go beyond your red and your orange? Which is required by state law, we're stuck with it. And you open it up to the blue shaded area, it's kitty bar the door.
The other thought that came, um, to the planning commission, and they talked about it before, coming up with their overlay idea, was that within this area that you see, particularly South Tacoma Way to Pacific Avenue, that's where the city's hotels are located, and there's about eleven hundred units or rooms in there. So if you're looking at Lakewood needing to plan for five hundred and seventy-four emergency housing units by twenty forty-four, in theory, that could be completely handled by the purchase and conversion of existing hotels within the city for those things, so for instance, we have right now Candlewood Suites, um, already purchased by Lehigh, it's going to be eighty-five units of emergency housing, and it, it's within, um, the Pacific Avenue area, right? So, again, it could, it could certainly be done this way, it's just the thought was, as I'm passing it on from planning commission, the thought was rather than have it all concentrated in these areas, do allow it to disperse a little bit out, so you don't have rows of adjacent emergency housing, that, that was the thought.
Yeah, to, to the mayor's point is? The availability of land is kind of like the flow of water, those were its cheapest and most, and so that's why we we have all the the adult family homes in Oakbrook, because she got more square feet, more bedrooms for the money. So more, you make it available? Your unintended consequences, you don't control where they're going to go. The market will pick where it's cheapest. And that might not be where we want them.
Well, the, the choice to do this is you're, you certainly can, and this is what is outright stated in state law as one of the alternatives. Um, but then understanding that that would be where they all will be? Uh, when and if they're built?
Mr. Bransitter?
Mr. Mayor, so in the in the overlay? That the commission is, uh, recommending, they constructed the overlay as not looking at groups of parcels, but they constructed the overlay based on zoning category.
They went with?
So they, they, they created the overlay by, since they said it includes all the R three.
They did not do that, what they did is say the minimum is those commercial areas where hotels and motels are, are allowed, or, yes, allowed, and then the rest of this is one mile from a transit uh, stop, a major transit stop, and that is a, an alternative definition within the statute.
So, 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 so the overlay was constructed by one mile from a transit stop? Which is a a Pierce Transit bus stop?
It's the, yeah, it's the, um, transit stop at the Sounder Station and in DuPont. Uh, again, there's a stop down there, that's either planned or already there, I'm not sure exactly how they're defining it in the state statute, but then, yes, um, the downtown transit center, and then further north, I think there was another stop that qualified under the definite.
So how did they view that, you know, and it was so? For instance, if I go along Military Road, okay, and there is several, just, there's one bus route that runs along that, and there's some bus stops that, that are there, but those didn't become nodes?
Not under the language of the statute as it reads right now, it's certainly in the prerogative of the council to do that if they wanted to.
No, I'm talking about what the committee, planning commission is.
Did not include that, correct.
So, so how did the planning commission decide on their larger overlay than just what the state requires? What was their formula? Other than we want more things on the west side of the city?
It was looking at one mile from the transit stations that were defined under the bill. They said, okay, if these are the spots within the city, where's the, where is the one-mile radius? And then taking out, as you see in the teal overlay, those zones where residential construction is not allowed, or residential development.
So, so I, so I, I guess it'd be? I, I, in, in what I've looked at in the packet, I, I really couldn't see the overlay with what areas were designated based on which criteria? I certainly understood the where it's required in the, the, the C one, two, threes, and, and, and the places where there are hotels required by the zoning? That, um, you know, when I look at the Sounder Station and I look at the five-twelve Park and Ride and I look at the the, the transit hub that's in the town center? I don't see how that significantly gets at what they say the intent is of having a broader overlay to disfurther, it doesn't seem like that, that, there's no significant dispersment?
That's?
By that process to, 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 to do that? Uh, it? So I guess I just, when it's come back, I guess I'd kind of like to see what areas really got added based on what criteria to between the, the difference between the two maps?
There's your bare minimum of the commercial hotel motel zoning. So i- if the council were to proceed with this, they certainly can. What you see is a difference to that map and that orange and red map is precisely looking at the one-mile distance, um, from those variously identified transit stops in the bill? Um, the one-mile radius there. And we can certainly create a new map that makes it more clear where it shows where those transit stops are, if that would help.
Okay, I, I guess? Can you help me see what I'm looking at? Where is the E S E S O overlay? What color is that on this one?
It's all turquoise.
It's all this light turquoise here, and then down in the so, these are your OSR one and twos, this is your public, you know, the faded purple is the, um, air corridor, and then over on the west side, it just simply wasn't within the one-mile radius. So it's, it's basically all of this, that's the washed-out green, I'm calling it to you.
So one-mile radius of transit, not a transit stop, per se, because there are a lot of transit stops?
Correct, correct, the, the transit definition is, is more specific than that.
Okay.
Tillicum is included because there's a sounder stop.
So basically, when it comes to us for action, this is the commission's recommendation?
Correct.
And, but we could adopt the narrower recommendation that just does the ones that the statement requires, because, okay, some of where hotels and things are au- authorized to be able to go and do that, and we could maybe in twenty twenty-four? Expand into an overlay, I think this is an overlay that would re- require some explanation to a great many residents? That whose area would now become part of the overlay under this? That I don't think is? I, I, I think, I think that there need to be some some upfront knowledge of that being considered as opposed to after-the-fact notification that you know, you're, you know, you're, on your block now, someone could convert one of the residents there to an emergency shelter. You, you know, and wh- while we, we are looking to do that, and and what is our shortfall in terms of the goal for? Shelter beds?
Uh, the, the city currently has eight beds, which are family units only, and the, uh, city has been targeted with five hundred and seventy-four units by twenty forty-four.
By twenty forty-four?
Correct.
So it's? So it's that 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 we we can move towards that incrementally. We don't have to
Correct, yes.
actually plan for that now.
Yeah. Well, you need, I'm sorry, you need to show capacity in twenty twenty-four for it. You don't obviously have to have all those units in place until twenty forty-four.
Okay, and 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 in your analysis, if we do just what the state said with the C one, C two, C three uh, other areas of what's up? Planner's view of the potential capacity there.
Well, what you could potentially end up with is along Pacific Highway and South Tacoma Way where the hotels are located, many of them could be purchased and used for the um use as permanent supportive housing and or emergency shelter. You may also have it in your downtown because that's where it has to be allowed because hotels and motels are allowed in the downtown.
Yeah.
Uh, and then it would be obviously a kind of a north-south concentrated um ribbon, if you will. And then if you add to that the six hundred or sorry, sixteen hundred and thirty-seven permanent supportive housing units. If you end up with an emergency shelter being converted into P S H over time, again, they're going to be along those same concentrated areas. So yes, there is room. Yes, there's capacity. And even with the existing hotels right now, it could be handled that way if they were all converted from the hotel. It's just, does the council want to, you know, make that decision that that's where it goes in the city?
Ms. Branson, I I guess, you know, we'll see how the public hearing and and such goes. I think that uh when this comes back to us for action, you know, I'd like to see a draft of an amendment pull back in twenty twenty-three to just the the mandatory uh areas and maybe put on, put it, but looking at it on the twenty twenty-four docket. Um, but uh I guess that would be my preference to have for to consider. I'd like to see a amendment to meet to consider for that when it comes back.
Go back to the overlay. I'll take this. So I this is in Oakbrook, right?
Uh, yes.
That's within one mile of what?
It would have had to be something along Bridgeport Way. I'm not sure exactly where the stop is that would qualify.
Oh, they're in they're individual stops that qualify. It's not, doesn't have to be a transit center.
Correct, yeah. It's it's broader than just saying center there. And I'm sorry, I don't have more detail.
Oh, okay. And what about? You mentioned something about DuPont down here in Tillicum.
Correct. And if I can read that, I think what you have is um planned down there for uh the Sounder Station to have a stop if it doesn't already.
But DuPont's miles away.
Did I'm sorry, I'm I meant Tillicum, not DuPont.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
But it's plans and that's that language is in the bill.
Plan. Planned by who? Yeah, well, sound transit plans to take over the world. Does that mean that they have they have evergreen funding source, they'll keep building as long as they can employ two hundred planners at six-figure salaries? So uh, plan is, I think it's something that if we if we had to, we could challenge this. Like hope.
Mr. Laura Zohar. Thanks. Uh, I I hear what folks are are saying about the the minimum requirement and then what this could look like as well. And it to me, it seems like the smaller the footprint, the easier it is to have resources to support it in terms of social services and police and fire and that sort of thing. Just some more feedback to consider.
And to the extent we can plan for using the restricted, I'll call it red and orange areas, right? That's all we really need to do. And whether it materializes from an economic standpoint, because commercial land is more expensive than residential land is another question. But I think opening up to all the residential, for whatever reason, it's not in the yellow, but it's all in the blue or the turquoise area, I problematic.
Just a heads up, and I hesitate to bring this up, but I will. In twenty twenty-four, one of the major focuses on land use and housing planning is equity. And so you may well have something come back that says
True.
E A, emergency housing, emergency shelter is a citywide thing rather than just being on the east side of the city.
But I also remind all of us that the legislature made the law with the language that you got to allow it in any residential or any zone that has the ability for hotels and hotels.
Yes.
So we're complying with state law.
You're complying with this bill, but next year it'll be another bill you're trying to comply with. So.
Yeah, the moving shell game.
Yeah, it is very frustrating and confusing, absolutely.
Mr. Bueller, you want to?
All right. So any other questions on oh five? Okay, okay. So oh six is a pretty simple one. It's simply removing language that says uh federal funds needed to be used for uh relocation of people no longer required to be federal funds. Number seven is the rezone of a single parcel to the southeast end of Ward's Lake Park to add it into the park. And the city already owns this parcel. It's just a matter of rezoning it so improvements at the park can continue. Number eight is a number of technical edits within the comprehensive plan to reflect the adoption finally of the Western State Hospital Master Plan. And then number nine is removing language in the uh comp plan that was even not even consistent now with our current development code that says um owners would need to be either in the primary or secondary unit. That would go away regardless of what the legislature did this last spring, but they also exclusively said no to that anymore. So those are your nine amendments for uh next week's public hearing. And then if you're ready, if the council wants more conversation, of course, that's possible, but otherwise it's scheduled for action July third.
Very good.
Okay. Oh.
Mr. Laura Zohar has a question.
Just one quick question. So for each of the e- each of these that involves a zoning change, uh, does that change the tax rate and tax revenue that comes to the city as they change in their zone?
It can, because what you're doing is looking at tax assessed value based on the best use of the property, right? So if you've got residential property being converted to a commercial, presumably the value goes up. You got commercial property going to open space recreation, it's probably going to go down.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. How much time do you think the next segment will take?
This will be much faster, I promise. I promise.
Do you want us to take a five-minute break first? Do you want to power through this?
Um we could power through probably. If you're, if no one's, okay, I'll get this over with you. Okay, so now again, we're jumping to twenty twenty-four. This is the big order of magnitude different comprehensive plan full review. And tonight is a status update on climate change and critical areas ordinance updates. So um you had asked for a number of status reports. This is just the schedule. You're on your second one for twenty-three. We'll continue to be here in front of you every six weeks or so with various chapters and elements um just to keep you apprised of how things are going. Next year is when we'll start to actually bring you recommended draft language and public feedback. Climate change is the subject of this evening. Uh, you as a council adopted the energy and climate change chapter in twenty-one. And then there was a work plan adopted um last year. And just within the last few weeks, you had the presentation from uh the Urban Forestry Evan School students talking about um what they were looking at in relation to not really urban forestry, but climate change recommendations. And we also now have Andrea Bell here remotely to talk about the first annual report on status for the climate change work plan. So I'm going to go right to where she wants to spend her time, but these are the fourteen items that were included in the work plan. Briefly, about half of them are done. So uh significant progress has been made, uh but some still remain. And then uh there's going to be next steps, of course. So I'm going to now turn it over to Andrea if she's still available online.
Very good. Welcome, Ms. Bell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I really appreciate you having me this evening. Um, let me just pull something up. Okay, so um I'm Andrea Bell. I'm an associate planner for the city of Lakewood, and I've been assisting Tiffany on creating um this progress report related to our actions towards um the climate change work plan. Um, and um I know that some of this might be repetitive information, but as you know, pursuant to House Bill one one eight one, um which officially goes into effect this July, I believe it's the twenty-third. Um, communities in Washington State are required to adopt a five-year climate change action plan to address a number of issues, including but not limited to population growth, transportation, housing, utilities, greenhouse gas emissions, and so forth. Um, so I know that Tiffany uh mentioned that we've had um quite a bit of progress um moving towards that goal. Um, not only adopting the chapter ten of the comprehensive plan for climate change, but also adopting the three-year work plan, which we've made um great progress um through so far. Um, and what our goal is to do now is to take the information we've gathered, um do additional data collection and analysis to really work towards creating the first draft of that work plan. Um, so the report that you saw of mine tonight includes that original three-year work plan adopted by council along with a new column, which provides all the status updates for um each action item. And in addition to making progress on items in the work plan, we're also actively engaging the community in various surveys um regarding their experience um with climate change, their degree of concern, um housing and so forth. Um um this work plan, in addition to the results of community engagement, we believe will assist in the city um creating the first draft of this climate change action plan and will really be a blueprint for the city um with regard to climate action, integrating climate change policies into applicable areas of city operations um and work with partners and communities and residents. Um, we do believe that as we begin to draft this document and gather additional data that we anticipate a variety of challenge um could occur. However, planning for these challenges as we move through this progress will assist us in creating proactive measures to accurately report on future climate change impacts. Um, some of the things that we think that we may see in terms of challenges um include but aren't necessarily limited to changes in zoning and increased densities. Um, likely beginning in twenty twenty-four, when we see some of those new legislative actions um uh really roll over into our zoning and development codes. Um, how do we save trees and include and increase density? Um, new development will increase costs. How does that fit in with the missing middle housing? Um, Lakewood is considered a contract city. We are not full service and it may be difficult to obtain obtain data um from utilities related to climate change. Um, Lakewood could be considered a barbell city. It may be more difficult and take longer to see changes in lower income areas over time. Um, outreach and engagement, what is going to be the most effective when um we're communicating with residents and our partners and making sure we're getting the best available data and um everything that we need in order to create this draft work plan and policies and goals that will really um, you know, benefit the city, our residents, our community. Um, the community attachment to historical preservation. Um, we have quite a few uh properties within the city of Lakewood that are designated um as historical, but we also have a certain element where we don't necessarily there are certain uh communities that don't like to see change, and we're definitely going to have to see change with um, you know, moving forward with uh climate change goals, policies, actions, and things of that nature. So um, you know, where can we meet in the middle to ensure that there's not um, you know, a community uproar perhaps about um, you know, properties or areas that may change that um communities think have historical relevance, but may not necessarily actually be um, uh, you know, determined as historical through the registrar or what have you. Um, the military presence and compatibility. And then balancing economic development and industrial growth with climate change factors. Um, a big element here is that we have seen a very large increase in truck traffic, especially from, uh, if you take a look at Woodbrook. It used to be primarily residential and in the last, um, you know, I would say probably about four years, we have seen exponential growth with warehouses, um, request for truck parking, trailer parking, and things of that nature. Um, so this is really just the first of many progress reports that are going to come before you. It's intended that the first draft of this climate change action plan will be completed in twenty twenty-four. Um, and I'm happy to answer questions, but otherwise I can pass it back to Tiffany and um I'll be here if anything comes up.
Well, thank you. I I think you've identified uh many of the challenges that you'll be grappling with as a planner, and I I'd love to hear about the tightrope walk between housing density required by the legislature and climate protections in terms of tree canopy. Have any uh illuminating thoughts on that?
Not in this exact moment, but I anticipate that it's going to be a very complex and interesting ride as we move through it and
Get a couple of uh houses on a single-family residential lawn, throw in a couple of eighty U's for good measure and
Right. I think that's really going to be what it comes down to, honestly, is we have the big picture, the idea that's out there of what they want to be able to see. And then we have real-world applicability. And so it's hard to say, you know, I've been doing this for almost ten years now and I really don't know what we're in for. So it'll be very interesting to see um that come to light when we start doing these amendments and seeing what'll truly be possible and what all of the um, you know, factors that get in our way will be.
I'm sure we won't miss the forest for the trees, Mr. Branson.
Yes, that's that's thank you. The name is Miss Bell. It, when we uh adopted the climate change work plan um, you know, you know, uh, last year, um, it it came to us as a proposal with fourteen of the action items. And it seems to me that we added one to make it to where there were fifteen items on the approved action plan. And and the updated only shows fourteen. Is if if we could look at really what was that, and I'm trying to recall what the fifteenth one was. But I, but I do think we ended up with fifteen prioritized items from the action plan instead of fourteen. Because we we did do an amendment at the day when we adopted it. Um, and it may have had something to do with urban forestry program, uh, but 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 not, but I know we ended up with fifteen because we did an amendment.
I apologize. It's Councilmember Branson Center. That may be an error on my part, just the way I dropped it into the presentation tonight, but we'll make sure to clarify that by next week.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, thank you again for sharing. Did you have one more?
Apologies. Thank you.
Wait, there's more.
Very quickly, and you're well aware of this, Mr. Mayor, but on this last week, there was a climate conversation launched by uh Pierce County co-conveners, uh County Council Chair Mello, Councilwoman Denson, Mayor Whalen, and Councilmember Palmer from Puyallup. And this is the start of a conversation that um is intended to encourage local jurisdictions to be working together on climate change uh policy and planning. So more to come on this. It it just happened this last Friday. Um, but one of the things that was, or several things that were talked about, as Ms. Bell just mentioned, is House Bill eleven eighty-one, which makes some um big changes in terms of planning for these changes. There's uh the Pierce County Sustainability Collaborative, which is also one of the uh organizations behind last Friday's event. Commerce and PSRC have started to provide climate element guidance. And then there's also in this year's operating budget, uh, climate planning funding that we'll see how that shakes out for local governments to be able to use. Uh, we are using Google and we continue to track annual changes in data available through Google. Um, and at this point, we're thinking this is still going to satisfy state requirements for this element, but we will change it if need be. There's a number of things that have been finished. There's new data about to come through with Project Green Light that Mr. Bueller is working on. Uh, it's a new um P S E initiative as well to uh lower light levels for certain parts of the city uh that are ongoing, I believe now, if not in the near future. Um, the steering committee that's been placed for our uh comprehensive plan process has talked about uh climate change and provided it feedback back to the city, and these are their top priorities I have identified so far. There are also six different outreach um events that are happening in May and June. There are several this week. And we will be doing continued public outreach on climate change between now and uh And we will be doing continued public outreach on climate change between now and uh next spring when substantive amendments come to the Planning Commission and the Council. So there will be lots of time for the city residents to become aware of what's going on and provide their feedback. I think that's all I'm going to talk about. Thank you.
Fabulous. Well done. Thank you very much. And thanks to Andrea Bell as well for providing the the feedback. I hear good things in the community about Andrea's work, you know, in the front line there. So that's really nice to see. So in lieu of any further questions for Miss Spear or Mr. Buwer, I think uh that concludes our items for discussion for tonight. Items tentatively scheduled for the next regular city council meeting on June twenty are those set forth in your documentation before you on the schedule. Now we can turn to reports by Mr. Caulfield.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. How y'all doing?
Standing. Yep, yep.
I'm standing between you and.
In a beautiful summer evening, you wouldn't do that, of course, would you?
Something uh more pleasant than sitting here listening to me. So um a handful of updates. I know um in advance of the evening, I I put in front of you a um very draft agenda as it relates to the joint meeting that you'll be having with the Lakewood Water District. Um, in advance of your next study session, two weeks from this evening on on June twenty sixth at six P M. So the mayor and I met late last week to talk about the items for discussion as it relates to this body and you can see them there. Um, i- if council's okay with this, what we will do next is we'll reach out to the Lakewood Water District and see what they would like to add to the agenda. So then we'll have one comprehensive agenda um for for that meeting. So um but ma- mayor may be under uh council comments. That's something that the council would like to have a discussion, a discussion on.
Absolutely.
And we can be flexible in how this is all framed as well. At your next meeting on June twentieth, the Deputy City Manager, uh Todd Kraus, she'll be presenting the first quarter financial report. Um, I do want to give you a bit of a primer on that. And um so the good news is that our general fund operating revenues, I'm going to stay focused on the general fund. That's the most important uh fund that we have, um in that it provides uh services to um um across a number of areas to our to our residents and businesses. So the good news is that through first quarter, our operating revenues are exceeding our budgetary estimate by a little over a million dollars or eight point three percent. Um, however, compared to a year ago, revenues have only grown by about three hundred thousand or two point three percent. So it's great that we're exceeding our budgetary estimates, which is a reflection on our good financial forecasting. Uh, but also compared to previous years, you can see things are beginning to slow down. Um, most rev- now that, but again, the good news from a from a budgetary standpoint, most revenues are um are 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 experience are are above wh- where we thought budgetarily, particularly all those that are associated with sales tax. But then there are some like gambling tax and some of our fees and fines are fortune fines and forfeitures that are lagging. But again, overall, um, we're doing pretty, we're we're doing pretty well there. But again, compared to the first quarter of last year, again, things have slowed down, which shouldn't be a surprise. You know, the economy is beginning to slow. Um, on the operating side, um, operating expenditure side, um, our um operating expenditures are actually below budgetary estimates by one point one million or eight point four percent. And that's just a reflection of where we are through first quarter. We really haven't gotten geared up for a lot of the major activities that occur in second, third quarter, things along those lines. Um, but again, that's a good trend. Um, however, compared to last year, uh two thousand twenty twenty two, operating expenditures have grown by one point eight million or sixteen point eight percent. And that's a reflection purely of increased um uh salaries and benefits for 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 our staff. That's that's the primary, that's the primary driver there. But again, Miss Kraus will be here next week to uh kind of go into a little bit more detail um on that. Um, as a follow up to our visit with our um sister city Gimhe, uh, we have prepared a thank you letter that we're going to be sending to um um their 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 mayor, Mayor uh Te Young Hong. And uh that's going to go out probably in the next few days or so. And as a part of that, we are extending an invitation for them to come visit with all of you next year as part of uh the two thousand twenty four Summer Fest event and for them to also uh come either in advance or stay after that weekend. And um we'll be working with our Sister Cities Association to plan out a really nice event and 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 a good experience for them when they come here, uh hopefully in two thousand twenty four. So I'm just wanted to give you give you a heads up on 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 that. Um, we have, I want to thank you all for confirming con- confirming that um Thursday, July twenty seventh at five P M will work well for a uh groundbreaking event um for the Fort Silicon Park turf field improvements. So we're in the process now, actually, we already have have reached out to our state legislators in the twenty eighth district to invite and involve them in that ceremony as uh as well. Um, I know um there's been some question about uh including internally uh at the staff level about proclamations. Um, long story short, um, city council can issue a proclamation. Likewise, the mayor has the authority to issue a proclamation. And under the code, when a proclamation request is received, really the city manager and the mayor need to sit down and just decide, okay, what comes to the council, which is a lot of them, but then there's also opportunities to be more efficient and effective where the mayor can issue a proclamation. Um, matter of fact, our economic development manager, Becky Newton, um, she's working with the Tacoma Pierce County E D B as well as Pierce County to uh request a proclamation recognizing October two thousand twenty three as manufacturing month. Is that something that needs to come to the full city council? Or is that something that should be, you know, just issued by the mayor since it's actually in support of a of an event? Um, you know, a recommendation is that the mayor just move forward with the mayor's proclamation. And the goal there too is just to, you know, not, you know, not have too much on your agenda or or if you're going to have proclamations, have proclamations where folks are going to show up and be part of the process and things along those lines. So I just wanted to report back on that. Um, you might see on our website, uh, a a new look um as part of the development of a communications and marketing operational plan. One of the things that our communications team has been doing is developing a brand guide, which is really uh as it relates to our website, focusing on fonts and colors and things like that. And so we begun doing that. Um, and uh more to follow on that and that our communications manager, Bryn Grimley, will be giving you kind of an overview of uh actually not just an overview, but a more detailed, in-depth review of that as part of your August twenty eighth uh study session, which should be later this summer. Um, next week, on Tuesday, no meeting on Monday, meeting on Tuesday. The council's going to consider appointing a city representative to the Pierce County O P O E Debatement Council. Uh, long story short, the city attorney and I wholeheartedly recommend that that representative be an elected official. Now that's your prerogative. If you'd like, you know, you could have, you could have the city attorney. We could have our one of our planning managers or or somebody al- along those lines, or even myself be part be part of that. Um, but again, mayor, under council comments, maybe the council wants to have a brief discussion so that as part of your next meeting, at least there's somebody, I know Councilmember Lorasal was interested in 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 serving on that or serving in that capacity. So I'm just wanted to 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 point that out. Um, and the feedback that we're getting is that um most cities are leaning toward having an elected official. And I would say that under this circumstance, because it's about money and it's about a whole large whole lot of policy issues, having a council member who brings a comprehensive approach to the table, I think is would be good representation for Lakewood as well as for the other cities, quite frankly. Um, also as part of your next study session, um, we're looking to bring forward a proposed Public Nuisance Code Amendment. Quite frankly, we consider it more of just general housekeeping and it relates to your rental housing safety program. And um right now, um, when we take a rental property through a public nuisance process, and if it's not brought into compliance, it kind of stops. There's no real resolution. And so the pro- the proposal is is to allow us on certain circumstances, and we have three, four, five a year where this occurs, where they don't come into compliance, um, where it will allow the city to step in and make the improvements to our public nuisance process. So if I recall, it's like a couple of lines in the code. So we'll be bringing that forward to you as part of your um June twenty sixth um study session. Um, also, um, uh, on June twenty sixth, um, if you remember back in two thousand eighteen, you know, we pulled together your city council's goals, vision, et cetera, et cetera, and developed a strategic plan. We've been working on one for um twenty three, twenty four. Actually, we were hoping to do it last year, but just given where so where a number of our priorities were, it kind of fell to the bottom. However, our assistant to the city manager and policy analyst, Michael Vargas, working with the department directors, has developed that and would like to bring that forward to you just for your review. And again, that will be part of the June twenty sixth um, study session. Again, it's not anything new. It's a conglomeration of all the policies that you have brought under one umbrella. And it includes a lot of great pictures. I'll add to that.
Great.
So, um, you know, also, also as part of the June twenty sixth study session, um, you might recall I um mentioned to you previously that Tactical Taylor, um, you know, the city bought out that property in a North Clear Zone, um, had asked for a temporary deferment of of lease payments. And um long story short, our recommendation is to reduce their 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 lease payment from um eighteen thousand dollars a month to ten thousand dollars a month. Now, what does the city get in that in return for that? Right now, we don't have a guaranteed, oh, and by the way, they are current in um their leases, their lease payments to date. They they had been in arrears for several months. However, they did come current um about a couple of weeks ago or so. Um, but right now, the the way the lease agreement is structured is that if they found a place tomorrow, they could vacate that. And why is that important to the city of Lakewood? The reason that that's important is because we were counting on that lease payment to help buy down the interfund loan that we had to close on the the final financing piece on the on the on the closing and the acquisition of that property.
How much is left on?
About half a million or so. Was, that's what it was in total. That's what it is in total. Actually, I think the exact number is like five fifty four or so. Um, and so, but with with this amendment, what we get is we get a commitment that they will stay as the tenant through the end of twenty twenty five, which more than allows us to pay back that loan, which again, right now, we don't have that guarantee.
How is that any more of a commitment than a written lease that there or were in breach of?
So, so while they're not in breach right now of anything, they have come full.
Right. They were in arrears.
And then and and then also in return for and then also in return for that, um, they have, we have worked with them to identify a plan so that they can find a new place to locate to as well. And so that's what we want to bring forward to you for your review as part of your June twenty second
Mr. Anderson.
Study session.
Yeah, I just have a question of the math on that. Uh, do we have a a reserve or sinking fund now where we deposit their rent?
Yes, Councilmember, that's the, the money that we have collected.
Which the net left on the interfund loans.
So, uh, we'll, we'll have that for you as part of your study session. Um, but I think we've collected about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars or so.
Pardon me.
Hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Five fifty.
That's correct, but don't quote me on that. We will have that. We will have that for you.
Ten thousand a month for thirty months is three hundred grand.
Yeah, we we will.
Close. So get close.
Yeah, we we will have that for you as part of the study session on the twenty sixth. But again, right now, what we don't have is we have no certainty on receiving any lease payment as we look out into two, three, four years. So, but wanted to bring that forward to you. So we requested, so we'll have that for you on June twenty sixth. Um, Farmer's Market kicked off last week and uh so that will continue through September seventeenth. Also, um uh next Tuesday, um, the summer concerts will kick off as well. And uh so those will run through every Tuesday with the exception of the week of July fourth. Um, also, um, Mayor's Coffee House is um this Thursday, January fifteenth at the uh Pavilion. And uh next week, I know several council members are going to be attending A W C conferences. So we're going to pull together a little packet for all of you as well.
And with the A W C, I think there are three of us going to them. Four, four council members going to A W C. Including the Tuesday night meeting, because we're going to have to work on a a way to all be Zoomed, because we have to have a a quorum for that.
That's correct.
Matters on the agenda.
So, um, so excuse me, so next Tuesday, my understanding that that Councilmember Bokey, Councilmember Lorasella and the deputy mayor will be here physically for the meeting. Councilmember Anderson is not going to be available.
Right.
And then yourself, Councilmember Bell and Councilmember Branstad are will remote in. Or if you can, I need one of you to remote in, so you have a meeting.
Okay, great. Yeah, we can do that, yeah. Someplace more fun.
I, just to friendly, I, you know, I'd also like to point out the reason that having the meeting on the twentieth is so important is because you have two public hearings as well as a condemnation ordinance, and we have done all the noticing and all all of that as well. That's correct.
And preferably all of us that can be there to weigh in and hear the testimony and advance the legislation.
That's correct. But that's my report, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Any questions, Mr. Branstad?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I I'm glad we're getting around to updating the strategic plan. Uh, it seems to me that the last time we did a strategic plan, it covered three years. Uh, I I I think.
Uh, we're behind, Councilmember. We had anticipated it being three years.
But but also our process uh regarding putting together strategic plans has been uh we had a draft, but we, but we did and not a, didn't just look at a draft in a study session, but that we did a retreat where we talked about and we and we looked at sort of, are there some ideas emerging that we want to make sure we reflect in the strategic plan to do that? And I thought that process served us well during several iterations of uh strategic planning and that we may want to consider doing that rather than having Mr. Vargas shoulder everything, put a draft together and then try to deal it in a time constraints of a study session with other agenda items. Sure. Okay, and then uh my my last thing is the, your your update didn't include a tentative date for meeting with our legislative delegations. Uh, is is that progressing in terms of trying to find a date when they'll be be available and 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 we have calmed down enough to meet with them?
Well, um, at this point in time, uh, the 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 meeting is actually the groundbreaking ceremony to invite them out there and have an opportunity to chit chat with them. So that's what we're thinking.
So so that you're envisioning that that's a thing where we can discuss with them the past legislative session and 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 that that seems a bit less formal um and uh harder to make candid points if we're standing at a public event in the in in the middle of a park.
We can do a walk.
People have allocated twenty minutes for.
We can do a walk around and walk up lake.
I'll I'll leave that to the mayor and the council if you want to have a special meeting. So. Um, also, if I could get back to Councilmember's comment regarding the strategic plan. So the strategic plan is based on that retreat that happened two years ago. Like I said, we've been behind.
We're just updating and consolidating actual steps, right?
That's correct, which.
Still well within and consistent with the policy goals.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a, we're playing catch up from two years ago, literally.
You know, but to that retreat was a pre-pandemic or early.
It was, it was, it was to establish your goal. It was in the middle, you finalized it, the middle to latter part of twenty one. And we had anticipated to come back via that fall with it, with pulling that strategic plan together.
Do another one. We should do it after the election in the spring of twenty twenty.
So your next one will be for twenty five, twenty six. That's correct.
Yep, just to make sure who the players are. Any other questions of Mr. Caulfield? Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thanks for the update. And uh as we go around with council comments, be mindful of the two issues that you wanted us to chat about and confirm for him. One would be the potential items for discussion with the Lakewood Water District for the Monday, June twenty sixth meeting. And I'll give you some feedback on that. And then the opioid task force potential representative. So with that, Mr. Bokey.
Yeah, a cup, couple items, P C R C meeting this week, and I will, I will be on that call. But you.
P C R C.
Because you have a meeting, right?
Yeah.
Be at the. Um, and earlier that day or Wednesday, I think I've got a that subcommittee and it may be one of our last meetings and we're going to try to figure out recommendations to the P C R C about changes in the um and I and I really don't know how that's going to go. To today, the group as a whole doesn't, hasn't seemed to have been able to wrap its arms around changes that like. To today, the group as a whole doesn't hasn't seemed to have been able to wrap its arms around changes they'd like to make in the process, so. Um, those are the two items. Uh, yeah, a somebody should be on the opioid task force and um. And I know who that person should be, and it's it's not me, but it um, and then. What was your other thing?
Yeah, water.
I I think this, this looks real good. I'm I'm really interested in um. Item number four, and I'd like to see how they handle that question.
Yep. Well, it's something to sink our teeth into.
From a public health perspective.
Mr. Branstadter?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I wanted to just say that I went to the Youth Council Summit this weekend. On Saturday, and it was great. I went with my daughter and we stayed for a good amount of time. Uh, they had a great speaker, Coach Reese was there. Uh, met with a lot of the students, and it was all about youth empowerment, and I thought it was a really, really good event. And I am looking forward to being one of the liaisons with council member Laura Sella this year, starting in September, I think. So that's exciting. I also wanted to give a little recap of some things that the Arts Commission is working on. So there, we had a meeting last week where we are working on the muralist. Um, that we're going, there's going to be a mural put. On the um, a Fort Silicon bathroom. So that's, we're taking a look at that, going over everything. And she will be presenting three sketches for review, and that will be brought before, you know, one, what the Arts Commission uh. Once they decide. And then we're really looking on it for a social media type of place, a place that can really bring a lot of. Eyes to Fort Silicon and a place that people can use to take their pictures and just be great there. And then congrats to the Farmer's Market. I think it was fabulous last week and just filled with tons and tons of people. And then, oh, wait, back to the Youth Council. I want to thank staff on that too, because uh, Shannon Bennett did just a great job along with the other parks um, staff. And for the opioid task force, I am all for council member Laura Sella going for that. And then I am also fine with Water District, their agenda.
Agenda, great, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. Um. In a couple of discussions I had with some Liquid PD officers, there was concern about the uh, Candlewood Suites property as it's coming in. Uh, and the ability for them to bring folks from Lakewood to that if there are beds available. And the. The word on the street is that it will be there to support wash dot only. So folks, they pick up on the highway and bringing them there. Uh, I confirmed this with city manager earlier, and he validated that after he talked to the Lehigh folks. So that's something for us to keep in mind and uh, do what we can to support residents of Lakewood and giving them the services they need. Uh, within the constraints of state law. Uh, other items, again, echoing what uh, council member Bell and uh, and Bokey said, uh, the Farmer's Market uh, was amazing. Uh, it was uh, just as good as it's been in previous years, but there was a huge turnout. Uh, my wife and I got a couple of different meals for dinner uh, from vendors. And uh, it was, it was a good time. So uh, thanks to the Parks Department for putting that on. I'm looking forward to going again tomorrow. I attended the Lake City Neighborhood Association meeting, uh, and that was uh, that was great. It was a really good turnout, lots of folks there. Uh, I met Officer Jeremy James from our police department, who is the homelessness homelessness liaison of the police department. Uh, so he's a great resource for uh, us and our community to reach out to for help. Um. So he's the one who gets sent out to to help with different um. Issues in the city. Uh, I also attended the Public Safety Advisory Board, uh, and there were presentations there from Sound Transit, uh, just an update of their current plans. Uh, through two thousand forty to extend southward to Dupont. Uh, they also talked about the uh, safety of. Uh, our railroad crossings, including the uh, Clover Creek Drive crossing, which has been brought up numerous times by members of our community. Uh, so there's opportunity for us to use their funds as part of our master plan to improve that. And West Pierce Fire uh, Chief Sharp also gave a presentation on the latest and greatest from uh, our fire department. Uh, and I. Anticipate they'll be coming to council to share that as well. As far as Water District, uh, I'm good with everything that is on the agenda there. Uh, and I am grateful for the opportunity, should it arise, to serve on the opioid task force.
Great, opportunities abound. Duly noted, Mr. Anderson.
Him, not me. Then it's fine. Uh, tonight, I uh, presented it, uh. What's going on in the the city to the school board. Uh. One thing, item of uh, just. Eye for the city manager, uh, Director David Anderson, who as most of us know have has a kind of a very regular newsletter. For the Tillicum Neighborhood Association, was particularly interested in some of the positive aspects of our agenda in Tillicum. And uh, he may be calling you to get accurate, more complete information, but those include like improvements in Terry, Terry Todd Park particularly. The plan, funded, the wall courts, uh, what progress has been made or what might happen with respect to the. Boat launch, uh, Camp Murray, um. Union Avenue, uh. Pedestrian improvements and he mentioned public camping, but people out there would be interested in the fact that. They being affirmative about that, so. Don't be surprised if he he calls and, is he. He's pretty informed and and he didn't know about those things going on, so. And uh, we've done a lot out there. It would be ni- nice uh, to get credit for what we've done. For what we're doing in. That's it.
Thank you very much, and thanks for bringing the Island Max. I didn't think these were from the city manager, so thank you for that.
You'll you'll notice, you'll notice there uh, that actually the difference between ones you find in some store here, and these, this, this, this is Costco, Maui. And they're fresh with turnover and the macadamia nuts actually crunch.
They're they're quite nice. Did you, did you try one, Mr. Copield? Did you try an Island Max? So to make sure you had a.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was listening to Councilmember Anderson.
Yeah, exactly. Talking about the Island Max.
Oh, the what?
I'll get you one later.
Sorry, I was trying to, I can't say the word mural, so that's why I see.
You're from Boston, we we forgive you. So, thank you, Mr. Anderson, for that report. So mine's very, very brief. Um. First of all, Mr. Copfield, it sounds like we're fine on the L W D Lakewood Water District meeting bullet items for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll I'll follow, I'll follow up with their general manager this week, and uh, we'll we'll coordinate.
Very good.
Thank you.
And it looks like Councilmember Laura Sella is by uh, acclamation without action, uh, duly noted as the. Short straw recipient for the uh, agenda item next week.
So who's the next short straw for the alternate?
Uh, I think Mr. Bokey loves.
Councilmember Bokey?
Yeah, those things.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, perfect. Oh, is that a problem with Mr. Bokey with the county?
Yeah.
I would anticipate that the uh, county council leadership may get crosswise with other members somewhere.
Okay, so we'll salvage his reputation. Mr. Branstadter or Ms. Bell?
I would agree with that assessment. I I until we really know what Lakewood's plans are. It's some of Lakewood's ideas about how the opioid expenditure should be made in future years for the benefits of its citizens may be different. Than other elected officials in the area.
You don't want to be persuasive, is that what you're telling me?
I I really am a person of, and and so I don't really like to argue with people.
Got it, yeah. A non-conflict person, Mr. Branstadter, how about you as an alternative potentially to Mr. Laura Sella? On the opioid task force?
I'm willing to do that, uh.
Okay, that's right. The opioid abatement council, otherwise known as the O A C, yes. Got it, task force. Got it.
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, so that covers that. My only uh. Point of interest, I did attend on Friday the Pierce County Climate Cooperative that Ms. Spear uh, mentioned that was put on by. Uh, a group of folks, uh, convening authority, council member, our chair Mello from the county, and. Councilmember Dennison from Gig Harbor, myself, and uh, well-meaning uh. Citizen activist, Dr. Ellie. And it was a good event. It was really well-attended by many electors from around the the Pierce County region. It's facilitated by some folks that were experts in their field. There were presentations from the Department of Commerce about. Some of the new law coming down the road, including the building climate requirements that we're all going to have to comply with sooner than later, which is amazing and expensive. Uh, to deal with some of the climate change issues on that. So more to follow on that, but the outcome was, it was a really good event. The uh, there was an opportunity for each jurisdiction to kind of have a a minute or two to talk about what they've done with regard to climate change initiatives and planning. Mr. Brewer came and provided a couple of slides that I think uh, were illuminating about how far ahead of the curve Lakewood is. We had accomplished a lot of major tasks that other jurisdictions are just marveling about, because A, they don't have the resources, or B, they haven't done the planning yet. So it was kudos to Lakewood on that. Um, so we're ahead of the game. I did have the chance to walk to the Pialp City Hall through Pioneer Park. And I tell you, talk about planning for an urban park, I'm always jealous when I walk through there. It's really well done. It has a spray park, mind you, it's beautifully done, doesn't look like it's, you know, in need of tons of maintenance, it's just really well done. They've got a little stage, they've got the Farmer's Market facility, they've got public art, they've got the whole bag down there, and they got really nice mixed-use projects. Surrounding the park, but housing and commercial spaces and vibrant um, pedestrian-oriented retail. So anyway. There's always a hope that we can do something similar in the town center here. And that's it, that's all I've got for tonight. I'm sorry I missed the youth summit, I had a Lakewood Rotary Retreat I was stuck at uh, for most of the day on Saturday, but it sounds like it was well-done. So, very good. So unless there are other alibis or any other comments for the good of the order, we're adjourned.